I said, "Okay, sure, you want to do that Pete?" He says, "Yeah, I'd love to do that." I said, "All right, well, let's make it happen." So here we are. We're kicking it off to do this time together because Pete suggested we should. Isn't that nice? Isn't that great? Everyone glad about that? So you are gonna get a ton of great ideas. So before we get started, I wanted to bring up Karen LaFontaine, a great friend to me and to the donor motivation program. And Karen, come on up here with me. And I wanted Karen to kind of kick off our time together, share a little bit of her heartbeat and some of what she has seen happen and some of the work she's been doing. So would you please welcome Karen LaFontaine? Would you please? Thank you. So Karen, give a little background. We're both Yankees and proud of it, of course. And no apologies to the Southerners in here about that. Of course, my wife's a Southerner, so I can say what I want about that. Give a little background. You started into development in 1994 up in Boston, correct? So give a little background on where you kind of started, who you were with, that kind of thing.
Yes, I started my first development position in Boston in 1994, working for the Museum of Fine Arts. That's a world-class art institute, which also has a world-class museum school, an art school associated with it. And in a first development job, I was charged with the responsibility to actually introduce a donor cultivation and stewardship program for a major individual gift circle that really loved contemporary arts and supported the school. And that's not usually the place where a development associate starts. But that gave me a wonderful grounding and annual campaign and got to see major gift solicitation with individuals upfront. And also that legacy piece very early on in my career. In 1998, I came on down to Atlanta and I worked for a number of health and human service organizations, most notably the American Foundation for the Blind here in Atlanta, where I launched a multi-year, multimillion-dollar capital campaign to expand programs across the nation. There, I secured a lead gift of one and a quarter million from a corporate partner, UPS Foundation. And I would also secure a $1 million challenge grant from the Woodruff Foundation. I've also served other human services organizations, Prevent Child Abuse Georgia and its senior management team, and also the YWCA of Greater Atlanta. Throughout my career, I've always been very much a champion for fundraising education and have served the International Association of Fundraising Professionals as chair of its conference education committee the year the international fundraising conference came to Atlanta in 2006. And so I'm very, very happy here to be here today, supporting Barry and my new friend Peter in this program because I do very much encourage fundraising education and I'll very much encourage anything that helps you get those legacy gifts for your nonprofit.
And gifts are great, right Karen? And so you've talked about getting some great gifts and grants. And one of the things I love most though about that is the relationship piece you bring to it. And one of the big pieces of that for you is always thinking stewarding the relationship, right? And how does planned giving help you just think about that? So yeah, everyone in the room, there's folks that are kind of new to planned giving, have been around planned giving. But planned giving essentially about stewarding relationships. So talk about your heartbeat around that and why that's so important to steward relationships in a process like that.
I haven't worked with Barry in the donor motivation program at a local nonprofit here in the last couple of years. It really did speak to my heart in that early experience in starting relationships with donors, that cultivation and stewardship piece of fundraising. You know, we as fundraisers, we're often running that annual campaign. We have those capital gifts if we're in that capital campaign to go after. We have major special gifts initiatives. And we have that annual calendar looking at us, our fiscal year, our 12-month timeline to meet specific financial goals. And then here is our planned giving program and our legacy giving program, which doesn't fit inside that 12-month calendar. We have to go at the pace of that donor whose legacy gift might be three years from now when they sell their business and retire and need, you know, a thought-out plan for what they want to do with their charities while they're taking care of themselves in retirement and their kids and their grandkids. And you know, that's not the favorite gift maybe that our bosses, CEOs, want to hear about because that's down in the future. But it is those kinds, those are the kinds of conversations, those stewardship conversations that we have to have through the year as development professionals in growing a legacy gift program. And so for a planned giving program, it's essential to be on the donor's timeline, to learn what they care about and when it's going to be executed for them and keep gifts in the pipeline. And I think really that's what Peter and Barry will really talk about today in future in their presentation.
And we got to work together today. Most recently Karen and I did, which was really great. Maybe a couple of the results that happened in terms of conversations with people we identified, that kind of thing, what happened as a result of working together through a motivation program, what you as a development professional were able to get from that. If I can think about the folks that we were able to meet and that kind of thing.
I think that one of the things that struck me the most is when people would call me or email me and tell them that it was so wonderful to get to attend a presentation like the donor motivation program where they weren't solicited, but got to hear and learn about how legacy gifts can help them, their family, and their charities. You know, it's on people's minds, but it's something that I think often gets pushed to the back burner. And I think if you can have conversations with people without applying pressure, without applying timelines, and actually spur them to action, you've given them a great gift. And then in the end, a great gift is gonna happen for you.
Yeah, that's great. So Karen, you've been doing a lot of consulting work lately with different organizations, growth major grants and stuff like that, right? And been doing those kind of things. Who do you love helping? What do you love being a part of?
Well, always looking for a new project or a new challenge. Right now, I have a client in the Community Foundation for Northeast Georgia, which for me is a very different kind of nonprofit again to get involved with. It's a charitable institution, but it's also an institution that wants to launch an education program. And it is currently forging a partnership with the JW Fanning Institute in Athens and also the Georgia Center for Nonprofits to bring fundraising education to Gwinnett County. And so of course, I would champion such a thing, having champion bringing it to Atlanta from an international organization. And so for me, that project there has been my current. We're going to be launching through the Community Foundation for Northeast Georgia at 2017 education program for nonprofit executives, board members, fundraising professionals, and showing them the ropes on how to raise money to do that.
Cool, awesome, awesome. Well, Karen's an exciting person to be around. If you don't know her, you should. And as other folks, this is a room full of learners because you're here. So everyone here should get to know each other. Karen, we thank you for being here so much.
Thanks.
Thanks Karen. Thank you, that's for sure. Thank you. All right. So as I already shared with you, kind of where Peter and I are. So Peter, come on up. We're gonna, Peter and I gotta sit here and we're gonna have a conversation. And as you go through, this time in your folder is a little card. It's about this big and it has a challenge or a question that you have. If you, if one comes up, you have, write it down. Write it down and we wanna collect those. And whether we get to all those, we'd like to kind of know what those are. We'll get to them here. If we don't, maybe we do, maybe do another time. And we'll do another session or something. So we'll do that. So when you see that. Little background, I'm just gonna share briefly. And Irene reminded me of this. So a little background, I'll just tell you a little bit about me for those that don't know, we haven't met before. I'm essentially a donor. And I was raised by a family of generous donors. My father was a, raised on a farm in Michigan, became the ultimate rags to riches story, became a multimillionaire business owner. So as a kid, I did not grow up on a farm, but on a beautiful two-acre estate with an English Tudor home. It was beautiful, it was wonderful. But one of the things I took away from my upbringing was not so much the home, the size, or the money that my dad accumulated, or the business he started, or the office buildings he owned, or anything like that, which were all true. But more of the, I watched and saw a heart of generosity play out in real life. And it wasn't until my father passed away in April 10 of 2007, when I became executor and trustee of his estate, that I learned just how generous my father was. Throughout the course of his life, nearly, or over, really over a third of his income went to charity. So I don't know how many find that would be generous, over a third? So that was generosity as I saw it. So even as a young person and then as a newly married person, generosity was just natural to me. It came natural to me. And so when my father passed away and there was zero charitable planning, a part of his estate plan, though he had a state-of-the-art estate plan and all the advisors that you could have around, he was told he was good. I talked to the attorney and said, "Everything was fine. I can tell you that something was seriously wrong." A man that generous, who served on five boards any year for the better part of 30 years, who 72 charities, almost every year benefited from my mother and father. And if you were in the top five of those charities, it was a magical year for you. And what blew me away is how can a man like that, that successful, that generous, with his money and his time and how he taught it to the family, would never have charitable planning or philanthropic planning a part of his estate plan? That to me was a travesty. And there are donors in every single organization in this room that have, that has a donor just like my family, just like my father and mother. And the opportunity there is enormous if you can relate to them on their terms, if you can help them where they're at and start where they're at. So the donor motivation program was a program that's been in existence for nearly 20 years that I said, "This speaks donor." And it got me charged up to bring that here. And a big piece of that is bringing education, bringing my story, bringing the opportunity for how you can connect with donors in a more meaningful, more intimate, more personal way. So not just you don't miss out on the gifts or the legacy, but so the donor doesn't miss out on the gift and on the legacy that's meaningful to them. Does that make sense to everybody? So what we do here and what you see from us in the donor motivation program here in Georgia, we do do it with a bit of passion and a bit of conviction, if that's okay. Is that all right with everybody? So today is part of that passion and conviction. When Peter and I were sitting down together, we said, "This was really fantastic." So for those that don't know you Pete, tell them a little bit about another Yankee brotherhood here that we have. Tell them a little bit of where you're from and up northeast and kind of where the development part started for you.
I grew up in Syracuse, New York. And I had the pleasure of going to a prep school for a postgraduate year in New England. After I graduated, I was back on campus. So one weekend, the president of the school said if I ever wanted to come back and work at the school, to give him a call. So some years later, I graduated from college. I was in New Orleans, working for the Equitable Life Assurance Society. And I really didn't care for the insurance industry after about a month and a half. So I was to report for duty in the Army about nine months later, 10 months later. And so I decided I wanted to do something constructive during that period. So I called the president of the school and I reconnected with him. And I said, "Do you remember when you offered me an opportunity to come back to the school?" And he said, "Yes, I do." And so I said, "Well, I'm here in New Orleans, working for the Equitable and reporting for duty in 10 months. And so I'd like to try to do something constructive. If you have something for me to do, I'd love to come back." So he said, "We're in the middle of a fundraising campaign and we could use some help organizing those area campaigns." He said, "Let me do some checking around and I'll get back to you next Monday." That was a Friday. In the morning around 10 o'clock, and I thought this was gonna be a long weekend. He called me back three hours later. He said, "You're on, when can you start?" And I said, "Well, I can be there in two weeks." He said, "Great, we'll see you here in two weeks." And I said, "Well, wait a minute. Fundraising, isn't that asking people for money?" And he said, "Well, yeah." And I said, "How do you do that?" And he said, "It's easy when the cause is right." So I never forgot that. And that has become a part of who I am. But I realized too that if you're fundraising and just asking people for money all the time, you only have three possible answers. Yes, no, or maybe. And two of those are answers you're not really looking for. But if you're relationship conscious and you're thinking about establishing a relationship, you can be successful every single time you're with someone because you know more about the cause than they do. And you can share that information and bring them closer and closer and closer to the cause, answering their questions until there are no more questions and they say, "I want to be a part of that." You don't even have to ask people for the gift because it's not about money at that point. It's about who they are and they want to be involved. So the real assignment for a planned giving officer, because the gift is a long-time gift in coming normally in a state gift or charitable trust arrangement, you have time to invest in the relationship to bring that person closer to wanting to make the gift. And once they decide they want to make the gift, the odds are they will provide the resources to make that purpose for which they want to support happen. And so the dollars you raise are just, they're not nominal dollars. They will be dollars that will support that impact that they choose to have.
So let's talk about a few of the, because you just, I don't know if everyone picked up on the number of nuggets that you just talked about, but a couple of, well, a few of the organizations you've been at and developed to give people kind of a sense of the different types of charities you've worked in over the last couple of years. I'm gonna say a couple of years.
That's okay. It's approaching 40 years.
Forty years.
I've been at that major independent boarding school. I've worked there three different times. I've been the dean for development. I've had a staff of 35 people working with me. We've raised some pretty significant dollars and done incredible things. I've worked at three major liberal arts colleges, started a program at Connecticut College for Women, now co-ed, went co-ed in 1969, '70. And really helped to build that program from the start. And reaching out to that constituent audience was really critical and important because the audience was all women. And I was, I was a younger man at that time. And so establishing myself as a credible resource for them was important. So I was all about, this is who I am and I'm here to help you. So that really came across in that environment. And I've worked at my alma mater, St. Lawrence University, liberal arts upstate New York, three different times. And I felt committed to the cause and wanted to get as close to alumni as possible. In that particular effort, the depth of wealth in that pool of potential prospects was not so deep. And so ensuring that we were bringing people close to the cause was always number one, always. Because once people were committed, it was a matter of repeat giving over one's lifetime. So it wasn't a one-off gift. Another major liberal arts college, Williams College, the same type of institution, same type of alumni, actually, but the wealth capacity at Williams College was much deeper. And so the commitment amongst that group, that audience, was always there. So it was a matter of what is the purpose now? And of course, the purpose again was their purpose and their reason to want to have impact. So once again, that was the common thread. And then several major research institutions, Syracuse University where I grew up, and I knew that campus extremely well. Also more sophisticated. But the constituent audience, so large, we're still having issues trying to bring people closer to the cause. So that was a real struggle at times. And so respecting the struggle and recognizing that marketing is a lot of it. It's creating the awareness and then it's bringing people closer. That's your effort, my effort. And helping people to want to make the gift. And once people are in the gift mode, then it's a matter of just answering three questions. How do I make the gift? When do I make it? And with what assets? And then moving people through that gift strategy process. Then it's stewardship, you know, in the final phase. So from Syracuse, I've also worked at Johns Hopkins, where I rebuilt a program that was broken. A very, very successful program. Actually, my predecessor was somebody that could even be my second cousin, which we discovered after a while, which was kind of fun. But a very strong program that fell apart because of the administrative effort. The administration was being done internally and the internal system was not set up structurally to handle and coordinate all that needed to be done for the charitable trusts and gift annuities that were happening. It was such a successful program, it had overloaded the system. So we had to go outside and rebuild and rethink. And that was when I was brought in to make that happen. And then coming here to Georgia Tech over 10 years ago now, this was an opportunity to work at a state school, public school, in a very different environment. I figured I should have a state school in my hip pocket with experience if I ever want to do consulting, which I'm about ready to launch into in the coming year as I leave Georgia Tech in December 31. But a very different program here. First-generation wealth, not wealth inherited. So it's helping people, donors, to understand how to be philanthropic and understand as I introduce myself to them, "I'm here for you. It's not about me and my performance and bringing in bottom-line dollars that are expected that I will do. It's all about you and your gift and the impact that you choose to have for your alma mater, your institution." When you can bring that into the discussion and bring it forward, people are more engaged and more relaxed. They're calmer about thinking how their philanthropy can come together and when it's logical that it might happen. And then considering all the family legacy planning issues and letting one's passion come together. And I even will mention to people, understanding how your philanthropy comes together and how you come to terms with your philanthropy can make all the difference in the world. And people look at me when I ask them how they come to terms with their philanthropy, many of them don't know because they haven't really thought about it quite that way. People with wealth and means may have been through the process. So they do understand that, you know, Barry, in your situation. But saying to people who may be daunted by, "How do I decide where and how to allocate funds?" I would simply say, in my current situation, you can give to students, faculty, research, facilities, athletics, whatever is important to you. Think the broad brush and then come to terms with how you think it would make the most sense for you and your family. And people are fairly quick to be able to say, "Well, it'd be students." "Well, and my dad was a professor. So I think faculty and curriculum is important." So it's just helping people to sort through. And that's really what we're all about too in planned giving. But understanding first, two, the, all the emotionality and all the stress that comes with raising capital dollars. If you're in a capital campaign or you need capital funding, that's immediately stressful. It is anxiety-producing.
No one has to have to deal with that at all in this room. Nobody.
But understanding in the first place that what you're setting out to do, raise capital dollars, is anxiety-producing, that helps. Because now you can say, "Okay, we'll just put the anxiety aside." So you can concentrate on what it's gonna take to move forward. And if you can simply do that, you can set a course, a strategy, that'll make sense. And when somebody a little higher up than you says, "Don't forget to bring home, you know, that big gift," you can say, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, we'll take care of that." I can tell you, I told Barry earlier, I don't even know how much money I raised this year so far. It doesn't matter. At the end of the year, I'll find out.
And, "Oh, really? Oh, okay." I would find that surprising, that he has no, that he doesn't know. I mean, it's surprising. So there's a, there's a big, there's a lot of nuggets in there. So I would encourage, as you hear Pete talk and share stories, there's a ton of nuggets in what he's sharing. So one idea here that you're talking about is someone's philanthropy. Someone's philanthropy, which is totally different than what normally gets talked about, which is the charitable fundraising goal. So talk a little bit about, let's unpack a little bit about the difference between fundraising and development or fundraising and philanthropy, charity and philanthropy. These two things are really different in your mind. So let's talk about that. Because we were at an event recently together and after the event, we said, you know, this person was talking about how they'd raised all these gifts and how he'd really done philanthropy. And Pete and I looked and said, "He didn't do philanthropy. He did fundraising with a different twist. They didn't really do philanthropy because it was still about the charity, not about the donor because he was trying to meet a goal." So talk more about that because this is a big, big difference.
Yeah, well, charity is really responding to an emergency need. You know, the Red Cross deals with it all the time and great causes, you know, not to diminish the cause. But it is what it is. I mean, people in your community will respond to as many of those community causes as they possibly can. But their mindset is checkbook mentality. It's a thousand, 5,000, it may be $10,000. But it's not very much compared to making a philanthropic commitment, which was more about who that person is and how they come to terms with their philanthropy. Thus, my question that I pose to many donors, "How do you think about your philanthropy?" And if they say, "I've never thought about it," then I know that they've only been dealing with charity and responding to direct appeals. Can you help the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts? Can you buy cookies? Can you do the, it's a diminutive giving. What we in planned giving are all about is moving people to want to make a commitment, to want to get involved. Moving our cause into the top five of their 30-some causes or more that they have to be interested in. And so it is about how you work with people and how you maintain your own calm and being relaxed as you're with people. Because if people feel your stress that's being passed down to you, you will carry that into the meeting and they will feel your stress and they will be more like this. They will be more about protecting and not being in a giving, giving way of thinking. So we want people to be relaxed. You need to be relaxed. If you have, if you live in an environment that is highly stressed, you need to somehow figure out how to take that stress off the table and get into your comfort zone. And you can figure that out because you have certain strengths and you're creative. You have talents that need to be tapped. And if you're not able to tap those talents right now because of the stress load your boss or somebody up above is passing on to you, you need to find a way, or if you can find a way, to set it aside.
When I try, if anyone familiar with an Ironman When I try, anyone familiar with an Ironman? Okay, so, so Ironman, so when you think about finishing that race, if you think that the whole time you're through training, people give up like crazy because you, you can't, your head can't get around that, that insurmountable day. So same thing, you think about the principle works in every, every area. So one of the things, and you can talk about this, that you shared with me about this, is, is one of the ways that you talked about sweeping that aside is building a pipeline. Because if you think about, now you don't know what was raised today, but if you were to say the dollar number of the pipeline, you know that number, right? Some, some amount, right? Because if you sweep that away and you say, all right, I'm going to focus on the relationships and I'm going to build a pipeline, what does having a larger pipeline do for you in being able to do that? We talked about that.
Well, if you, if you know that there is a significant pipeline of potential support out there, and, and my number is about 150 million. I know people that the entire estate is coming and it, and it's, it's a nine-figure estate. But I can't push that person to want to make that gift today or even tell me what that amount is going to be because there are certain family issues involved and he's just not in a position to make that statement today. So understand it's a process. What we do is a process. It's not a transaction. If you are transactional, go into the annual fund office because that's where you belong. And that's, that is where the upper management needs to think. But we're in the, in a process that is establishing a trusting relationship. We are talking with people about significant personal aspects of their estate wealth that is confidential. And so we need to be positioning ourselves into that trusting relationship. That takes time. And if you see a person once, you need to see them three, four, five times before that's really going to come into play. And they're going to look at you and if, and if you're all anxious and stressed out about coming home with a gift, they're going to back off even more. Because that, I'm trying to usurp their energy and their control over their gift. And most of the people that you're looking to talk to, they're used to being in control. And so if you try to usurp their control or take their energy, it's not going to happen. Understand the process that needs to take place. And then there's a big, big difference in the ways that transactional fundraising can happen. Yes, some people are transactional that you see and meet with, but most people looking to make an estate gift need to have the relationship established first. And this is what I heard when I met with a fellow out in Kansas City who several years ago, I was asked to help him with his estate gift. And at the, at the end of the day, he was sharing with me, he was a CEO of a major energy company, who has salespeople, and he tells them, in the first year, I don't want you to sell anything. I want you to establish relationships. And then once you've established relationships, that's when we can work with people to consider a business arrangement. The other reason is if something goes wrong in a relationship, those people will give you a chance to fix it. If you're, if that business came transactionally, you'll wind up in court. Because that's the way their mentality is. I paid for a certain product, I didn't get the product, and so, you know, we're going to get it out of you in another way. So give people the opportunity to make good. And at the end of the day, he, he told me, because we worked with him in a relationship building way, he was prepared to give more than a, a modest six-figure gift. He's wound up committing over a million and a half dollars. And he's also serving on several committees, coming back and forth to campus. Now, we have him for life. So it's the relationship and that's really what we're trying to build as we go forward in planned giving.
So the idea was, if you went in transactional, you could have appeased those in leadership who said, bring back a gift, and you came back with 50 or a hundred thousand dollars, right? You would have gotten some praise, wouldn't you, Pete?
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, how many, how many dollars come back with 50 or a hundred thousand dollar gift after meeting with a donor, right? And however, with this donor, because you took a long view approach, that hundred thousand dollars really turned into a million plus, right?
Yep, million five, yep.
So that's the, that's the power and metric and number that I find all the time as we sit down with charities over and over again, development professionals and leadership and board members and talk about planned giving, they're missing out on the bigger gift because they're too short-term in their thinking. And there are donors, and you've said this, there are donors who are more transactional. However, if you're able to shift even the transactional donor into a, into a, a relationship, have you, you've seen a result there too.
For sure. I mean, that is, that is clearly the case. But donors that are transactional are also controlling the relationship. And they know if they, if they allow you to get closer, then it's going to cost them more. Because these are people that do understand philanthropy and they don't want to get much more than fundraising. So responding to charity or responding to philanthropy, the donor is going to respond and say, well, philanthropy's going to be a big number and charity, I can manage with smaller giving strategies. And so smart donors, people who have been philanthropic through time, are the ones that you want to be moving into their top five charitable causes. Because those are the ones they want to get a little closer to. But understand that I'm fortunate, being in education, I have a captive audience. Some of you don't necessarily have a captive audience and you have many different personality types that you're dealing with. And so you have to pause and understand, now, am I going to visit with a music teacher? Or am I going to visit with somebody who's a wealth manager, an investment manager with Morgan Stanley or some of the other big ones in Wall Street? What is the type that you're dealing with? So you have to shift gears. When I was at Hopkins, we had the P body conservatory for music. We had the, a school of nursing and we had major surgeons, heart, lung doctors that we're working with and engineers. So I was constantly shifting gears depending on who I was talking to at any given moment in time. You know, am I talking to a cellist or a concert cellist or am I talking to a nurse? So it's very different. And I respect each of you for who you are and your organizations. You're all different. So you're all going to have to be thinking in slightly different ways, but at the end of the day, it's a process. And it's a process of getting to know people. And as you get to know the people and the relationship is established, they will respect you more and more and more for taking the time to get to know who they are and their wealth understanding and their philanthropic intentions. The relationship helps you to pose the questions in the right ways and not simply be transactional. It's easy to be transactional. You know, I could walk around the room here now and ask each of you to make a commitment of X dollars and the answer would be yes, no, or maybe. But if I really want you committed to the cause, it's more about, here's who I am, who are you and how can we move forward?
Let's throw a couple of examples, if we could, about, one of the stories you shared with me was about a gentleman who, I thought he wanted to do something and when it kind of started, it was kind of a small, but he wanted to sponsor, and I don't want to share too much detail, but they wanted to, wanted to name something. And, and, and you gave him a number of what it would take to name that. And he said, I can't do that, Peter. And, and, and he said, well, let's, let's talk. So you said, let's, well, assets, how much, when, all those kind of things. And you start to put together that. So talk a little bit about that relationship, how you brought planned giving, annual giving, campaign giving, major giving, kind of all of together into the, into the equation. Are you familiar with this story?
No, I'm still trying to figure out. Oh, yeah. Okay, so interesting, I was dealing with this case actually.
I don't know if I should say all that, sorry.
I was, I was, I was actually dealing with a little detail about this gift this morning before I left to come here. This individual made a $5 million commitment and he was very interested in the aquatics program at Georgia Tech. We happened to have hosted the NCAA swimming competition this past year, past winter. And so we needed a new scoreboard. This was about 18 months ago. And so that was a $500,000 project, another million plus for just the overall maintenance and upkeep of the aquatics building. And then the balance could come also for maintenance and so forth, supporting the program going forward. So he was familiar enough with us that he approached people in my office who were able to respond positively to encourage him to want to make a gift. Ultimately, he wound up, once he got the nod that some of his gift strategy could be through an estate gift, he gave us 500,000 immediately for the scoreboard. And we got that in play. Another million over the next four to five years and the balance of three and a half million through his estate. And so he asked, would that be okay? Can we, can we go forward and talk on those terms because that's what I can do? He, we encouraged him and said, well, yes, of course, and we can help you figure out how to do that. We did encourage, ask him if he would make that estate gift, a binding estate gift because we were putting a name on, on the building in the Aquatics Center, which he did in honor of his swim coach, who coached at Georgia Tech. So that is on the recreation building right now, the McCauley Aquatics Center. But that's a combination blended type of gift arrangement. And we've been, I've been doing those types of gifts since I've been in planned giving. It's, it's kind of present day to be talking blended gifts, but we've been doing it forever. And it's just a more conscious way to bring it to the surface so that more organizations will think less about planned giving transactionally and more about it as a relationship establishing business. And frankly, it's working with people on their terms. It's what he could do. This person has been very philanthropic, totally philanthropic and not just thinking charitably. For him, it's all about impact. That gift was all about what was going to happen, how the impact was going to occur at Tech. He wanted to honor his coach. It wasn't about him. This person's name does not appear anywhere on campus. So that's the way his philanthropy works.
So think about that, planned giving, annual giving, major giving, campaign giving, kind of all gets blended together, but if you don't blend them all together, you may just get an annual gift that you can be praised for, or you can get a really big gift that takes a little bit longer, that can be established in a more significant way. So never forget, it's really philanthropy, as Peter said, is about the donor, is about their wishes, is about what they want. And it takes time to understand what that is. And I'll submit, in my situation, no one ever took the time to understand that with my father. No one ever took the time to understand what mattered to him beyond the money. You got to get beyond the money to be able to get to what the money would do for the donor. Then you see what the money does for the donor and now you can start to see where it blends and matches up with your organization and the different unique possibilities of where that can go. And so, and then to do that, you know, start and have more in your funnel. Because you put more in your funnel, you remove a lot of stress. And then to measure, and Pete talks a lot of this in the article that we provided for you, we provide the metrics article for everybody. And that article talks about how you measure this, it's conversations. Because the more conversations you have going on, the more you can keep some energy going, that, that kind of thing. So you measure this by conversations and being able to bring those together, right, Pete?
When the pipeline is full, then you're, you are more relaxed knowing that they are going to mature at different stages. And so year to year, you, you may not know which gifts are going to mature, but you have greater confidence that something is going to happen and you don't have to focus on making something happen or pushing something to happen. So you can be more relaxed and calm with those donors and, and they, they can be a little more generous. I'll give you a quick, quick example. This one's quick.
Okay.
A, a donor two years ago committed over $3 million in his estate. And just recently, in the last four months, he realized, he learned about charitable remainder trust. And having some significantly appreciated privately held stock, he realized that if he put the stock into the charitable trust, which is tax exempt, then he could avoid the capital gain tax and have the full $3 million working for him and to his and his family's benefit. So he called me and he said, would it be okay if I thought about shifting over to the charitable trust? And I said, of course. The trust is irrevocable gift and the estate gift is changeable. So we worked with him and he's now got a charitable remainder unit trust in place. And he felt so good when he signed the trust agreement. He said, this is so much better than just waiting to give you that $3 million when I die. My wife and I don't have to worry about managing that asset and ensuring that it's going to be there. You have the opportunity to manage it, you're not charging me a fee and the corpus can grow and be worth even more to you in the long run. So, I mean, he was espousing all the virtues of an estate gift, of the charitable remainder trust. I didn't have to list each of the benefits to him. So this is a person who is studious in, in being connected. He wanted to learn because his giving, his strategy was in play. It was all about him.
And so we hear that in the planned giving community and I, we hear this all the time because the planned giving community typically loves to put a, put an attorney on the platform and, and talk about the really cool charitable remainder trust and the technicalities of how that works. And then you want to tell that to the donor and then donor kind of glazes over, you know, and realize that 90% is a bequest. It's a bequest, it's a simple bequest, which is where this began. And so talk about how your point of view about what are bequests for you from a planned giving standpoint? Because probably some people here say it's irrevocable and it's just a bequest and no one can get excited about it, but that's not how they should view it. How should they view that?
Well, an estate gift is changeable, it is revocable. And so once a person has decided to place you in their estate to receive some of their wealth transfer at their death, they have brought you in close and it's an expression of their interest and dedication to your cause. It doesn't matter the amount. They have made that commitment to say, I really felt close to this purpose and the impact that it's having in the community and education and healthcare, religious or however it has impact. Once they're on the inside, their interest with you should be stewarded even more because there's opportunity for today gifts. As people have discretionary wealth, they may be looking around for ways to make and have an impact today. And if you're in conversation with them in the relationship, you're going to know that and they're going to know that. So keeping them close, getting them into your cause to hear and listen to what's happening is critically important so that they can stay connected, they can be engaged, so that their involvement will happen. Those are the three key elements. Those are the three key elements to the relationship. You, you really need to think about how to connect your audience with what it is that you do every day.
Very powerful. So realize that four out of five donors have never been asked or engaged in a philanthropic conversation about planned giving. Four out of five donors. Those who have made a planned gift, over, more than twenty percent of those donors are likely to make another planned gift as Pete's story talks about. So think about that, everyone who's been in the funnel, everyone who stays in the funnel, there is huge opportunity in there. So all the way around, does everyone get that? Big, big opportunity. So one last thing, get really, let's get really, really practical. And because I love how you talk about, as you start a relationship with a donor and the first time, because every donor comes in saying, thinking, you are doing fundraising and you're gonna ask me for a gift. Every donor that is, is worth seeing, has that, and everyone's asked them for a gift and they already have in their mind, I'm gonna give you two thousand, five thousand, ten thousand or a hundred thousand dollars. That's what's in their head. And they have that number. And if you can guess the number in their head, you're gonna get that gift. And they're thinking that way coming in. And you have a very disarming way of shifting that entire conversation and changing how they're gonna then think about you. And I'll share, one of my favorite questions I like to, to ask other donors who are philanthropic is if you could wave a magic wand and have anything you want when it comes to your family, to your future and to your philanthropy, what would that be? If you could wave a magic wand, because now it gets them to think bigger, gets them beyond the donation, gets them beyond whatever it is they did do or think they can do, and gets them out of that realm because planned giving opens up a world to them they didn't even know was possible, right Peter? So talk about how you engage that conversation at the start and what that looks like and how disarming that is, is real, just real practical. What do you say, how do you say it? That really matters.
Well, it, it might start with the question I raised earlier, how do you come to terms with your philanthropy? And this is, you know, who I am is I travel around the country and I meet with alumni. I usually travel with a, with a regional colleague. And I'm, I'm there for them. I'm there to help them with, with their philanthropic thinking. And so once I understand how you come to terms with your philanthropy, then I can help you when you're ready. It's all on you, it's when you're ready. And when you are ready to, to move into thinking about a gift strategy, there are three questions you need to answer. How do I make the gift? When do I make it and with what assets? You begin with the assets. And depending upon the assets held in their portfolio, certain assets are going to be more highly taxed when liquidated, either during lifetime or through their estate. So we can talk about those gifts, whether they're today gifts or tomorrow gifts and whether there is to be a life income gift component. So I have this Udo Executive Summary, that's a two-page item. And it's the executive summary of a full thirty-page comprehensive guide to gift planning. And I explain to them and show them on the first page that you can make a gift today outright. You can make a gift tomorrow through your estate. You can make a gift that'll pay you income. Or you can make a gift that'll pay Georgia Tech an income for a period of time and then the assets come back to you. So then I turn the, the page over and it's those three questions. How, when, where do you make the gifts? And so we start with the assets. And the assets that are most productive to, and tax-wise to give through one's estate are IRA individual assets because they haven't been taxed yet. So if you pass them on to heirs, individuals, they'll be taxed seventy to eighty percent, depending on which state you live in, et cetera. And so once they grasp that magnitude, then they begin to realize there is a logical way to, to come to terms. When people realize that you can be big, broad and general initially, then by talking a today gift versus a tomorrow gift, that helps them to begin to formulate what their potential is for making a commitment today versus tomorrow. And maybe the estate gift, a simple bequest or a codicil of one's will is the way to go. And maybe that is the way to go initially. And maybe that's a placeholder gift. It just kind of gets somebody started. And then you bring them in closer to you and they really begin to understand how they can have impact. So once again, understanding that this is a process and not just a one-time meeting. It helps you and it helps the donor to realize the relationship as it comes forward. And frankly, it's more fun.
No, no one wants to have more fun. This is serious and, you know, we don't want to have fun.
As I think about moving into more of a consulting role, the one thing that I'm going to miss after these forty-some years of doing this are the people. The people that I've been meeting with across the country. And so for the last couple of months, I've been seeing people and sharing with them that, you know, I, I may not be seeing them going forward. And most of them have said, oh, we'll see each other because we're in a relationship. And so the relationship doesn't just automatically go away because we have something established.
Everyone see how powerful that is? Regardless of the role or position you're in, you've established a relationship, they're happy. They're glad, they're excited about what they're doing, why they're doing it. And they're thankful to you for doing that. And Pete, we're thankful for you for being here. Would anyone say thanks to Peter for being here? So a couple of things as we kind of wrap up. Again, thank you, Peter, for just sharing stories. And there's only about a dozen more things that we could get to, right? We'd love to hear kind of what you have taken away. So Annalise is gonna pass out a card to you. And would you just tell us a few, a few nuggets that you took away here today? And, and, and tell us kind of what was a big, big idea you got that you liked the most or a big question you have? Would anyone do that? Take two minutes. Annalise is gonna pass those around, she's coming here from the back. And, and put those down for us to hear. And this is a resource card because we want to continue to provide different resources to you. We have actually a couple of more sessions coming up, one in November, one in December. One of the things that Pete talked about was building a relationship that is trust-oriented. And one of the things that we thought to do here in November was get really, really tactical about how you build trust and how you build a substantial relationship where the donor feels encouraged, where they feel blessed, where they feel honored. And so we're gonna do that in November. These are all the things I wish that were said to me as a donor that I never heard, never approached this way. So we're gonna get really, really tactical, as well as strategic still in November, a fast session. So there's an opportunity for you to learn about that. And in December, we're gonna do another educational interview session like this with actually Mary McCormick, who's sitting right up here, wave Mary. Mary's with Children's Healthcare of Atlanta and was previously at University of Georgia. And so Mary and I have been talking about that and excited to do something together in, in December. So we're gonna do that, you won't want to miss it. So there's an opportunity to learn about those as well on those cards. Can I have a card, Annalise? So fill it out, please, and then write some of those nuggets down and give you a second to do that. What else am I missing?
As we're writing, may I ask a question?
Write the question down and give us one second, then, then yes, perhaps Angie.
Yeah, if you've already written a question.
Yep. So if you got those, I just don't want to distract others that are writing. So right at the bottom, how many get the, our weekly e-tip on planned giving? How many get that? Raise your hand, raise your hand real high. So if you don't get that, the first box here is to receive the weekly e-tip. How many appreciate that? I mean, like that, those who get it? Good. So we want to get that out and benefit folks with that. So check that first box, we'll make sure you get added to the weekly planned giving tip. It's literally a one-minute tip, you can get some really good nuggets fast. Number two, I want to attend the next live presentation we're gonna share in November. We're gonna talk about some of the trends, we're gonna release for the first time some of the results we have. We did a year-long interview campaign in Georgia about the planned giving challenges and struggles that planned giving and development officers here in Georgia face and how they are the same and different from those nationally, like we've been studying for seventeen years. So we're gonna release some of that for the first time as well as get really practical with what you can do to build a more donor-centric relationship. And so that is the next live presentation. So that's the second box, if you check that, we're gonna make sure you get a special invitation to attend that November, the first week in November, I think it's November third. We're gonna do that. And then when you're there, we'll talk about the next one on December eight with Mary McCormick. And lastly, for those that are interested and said, you know, this was great, but we want to, say, what does this mean for our planned giving program? What we put together is what we call a planned giving landscape that allows you to get your questions answered specifically. And I'll sit down with you and just kind of talk through, what did you hear Peter say? What are some of the biggest opportunities and some of the biggest obstacles you face in your planned giving program? That's a free twenty-seven minute conversation I sit down and have with you. If you'd like to take advantage of that, that's the third box. We'll call you, we can talk about what that would look like for you and how you can benefit from that as many, many organizations, even though some in the room have taken advantage of. And so you may want to do that as well, that's the third box. So check the box, fill out the card. So check out three boxes, check two, check one, check none, it's up to you. Just do that, Annalise is gonna collect them and then we're gonna have fun. We have a couple of drawing items. Is it okay if we do a little fun? No one? Who doesn't want to have fun? Okay, so the people who don't want to have fun, just don't turn in your card. We're gonna have a little fun, so we're gonna do that. Pete's gonna draw them, so it must be authentic, right? So Pete is gonna draw those for prizes to Starbucks, donor donors. And then before we do that, we have one more thing we're gonna do. So Annalise, you collect those and bring those up and the prizes. One of the things that, one of the things that we've had a chance to do before we do a drawing I want to share is, is as I've had a chance to really meet folks like Peter and really talk at a deeper level with folks literally around the state of Georgia and many organizations, is I really love the planned giving community. I love the planned giving community because it's relationship-driven. And I love being around people where it's about relationships, not about something I can do to someone else. Does that make sense? And I just want to be around people like that. How many want to be around people like that, right? That's the kind of people we want to be around, we want to celebrate. So in thinking about this with Pete, very rarely does the idea of building relationships ever get championed, right? We all champion the gift or the big dollar gift or the campaign gift and this major gift officer and what they did. But very rarely do we champion the person who's been the most relational, right? We don't do that. And I'm saying, why? This has the biggest value, it has the longest strenuous of friends over a long period of time regardless of the gift. One development officer said, the most, the best gift we ever got from a planned giving campaign that we did was a thousand dollars. This was the most meaningful gift to me, this development officer told me. I said, now is that not cool? It wasn't the million dollar gift that he got, it was the thousand dollar gift, which takes me back to the Bible days when the, when they, when they were collecting money as they walked into the, the temple, right? And the, and the rich man put a bunch of dollars in and then the old woman put in the coin. And then Jesus said, oh, the coin, blest are you who put in the coin, right, small. So it can be large, it can be small, but it gets really powerful when it's, when it's really meaningful. So we want to celebrate that. And so we have put together the Donor-Centric Excellence in Gift Planning Award. And to give it to Peter Taconi to kick off an annual award that we want to do to celebrate those who are gonna be relational. And we're gonna treat people with kindness and sincere respect in their endeavor and their relationship. So Pete, will you please join me to receive this award?
Wow. That's awesome. Well, it's mostly because of you and the relationships that we've established today and going on in the future and the many people that I've worked with over time and just bringing them a little closer to the cause that's important.
Awesome, we thank you Pete, thank you very much. So we have some cards, so Peter, will you do the honors of?
That would be a way for them to do that, wouldn't it?
It is, and if you're sensing that it's more about the development officer, then there's something missing in your process for engaging and involving that person. So if you're sensing that that is happening, then you need to take a couple of steps back and rethink what those activities are that you're doing to get that person more involved. And there may not be enough being done. I, I would forecast that that's probably the case when there's a lot of transactional development going on.
Sound helpful? All right, another question there.
This is more tactical, this is a philosophical question. What value, what metrics do you value and look at to determine whether you have the successful performance?
So in like a minute or two, Pete, I mean, this is, that's like a dissertation kind of question. He has an article and a book about, about this. But in a minute or two, measuring, you know, as you think about more conversations in the funnel and you think about it that way.
As you think about the activities that are required in order to move that person into an awareness of the, the organization and then the engagement process, what, what are those steps that cultivate that relationship and move that person into the strongest possible position? It's not just about number of visits and the dollars that, that result. If those are the only metrics that people measure your performance by, then you're bound to be short-circuiting that process. And in fact, I've existed in those organizations and we've just had to step well beyond and just put those aside as I've said before. And we focus on what really counts. And that is spending time getting people involved, getting them to the campus, to the organization, to see what impact they can have and actually experience it. And if you can, think about the activities, the action steps. Instead of a work plan, think about having an action plan. So just change that way of thinking. And, and your plan really becomes your set of metrics. And you can, you can have metrics that are ten to twenty steps or you can distill it down and to three to five. And the three to five, you know, is, is supported by yet three to five more other activities.
So what I, what I heard Pete say is that there, there are these end result, that goal you're trying to go after, that dollar amount. And what I heard you say Pete is remove that, come back to the actions you can take, whether it's how many, the conversations you're having, it's the people you're gonna interact with, how you're gonna build a team and how you, you and a development annual person are gonna see people, how you're gonna send notes, how many do you hand notes, by the way? All right, so the huge, right, doing those, those kind of things. So those, those actions, right Pete, that you can control.
And one more comment. Think about the, the moves that will bring that person closer. So metrics are more about moves management, managing that prospect, that one prospect, rather than just your performance.
Yeah, that's good.
And so if you can, if you can think more about, it's not about me, it's about them. And what will it take to move this person a little closer? You know, sending them information about specific programs that they mentioned. You know, if, if it's healthcare and it, and it's, and it's eye care, then it's more about some of the things that are going on in, in the eye clinic. And if it's religious, you know, some of the things, the programs that are happening within your program that you want them to know about.
But, but hopefully it's something that's sent you in a conversation and is pointed, is directed exactly to them. Or some generalized thing and the guy says, why are you sending this to me? You know, but if you had a You know, but if you had a conversation, you know, this very specific thing is something that's important to me. So, all right, another question right here.
So, and I imagine that the same philosophy applies to dealing with, for instance, board members. So, communicating with board members and reaching out to the board members that make an organization, whether it's a institution or some original non-profit. Is that, that relationship is already there with the institution or the entity on the door. So, I guess what is the language you would recommend using when you've got members that you see, you know, that haven't made a plan, that haven't made that commitment, but you know, should?
So, there's a lot of shoulds, right? So, everyone should, all the board members should. Again, they're like the average donor that four out of five haven't. So, but the question for those that couldn't hear in the back, what is the language, what are the things you can do to connect with those who are already affiliated, like a board member who should make a planned gift? And how do you connect with those that are already naturally there? Is that right?
If you're asking that question, then I'm going to suggest that you don't know that person well enough. And it's more about, once again, the relationship. And so, you need to get a little closer in the relationship. In some organizations, the planned giving officer is not allowed to intersect with trustees. So, it falls back to the president or the head of the advancement group to do that. They don't always get as close as they need to. And so, there's a gap and you're not going to be able to fill that gap all on your own. So, that's where added stress gets piled onto you. In our campaign, we had sixty-four percent of our trustees commit to planned gifts. That's because we have what we call the gold standard in place. So, if you're a board member on campaign steering committee, you give annual dollars, you give capital gift to the campaign and a planned gift to the campaign. So, everybody who came on as a trustee or a steering committee member understood that. And so, we reminded them throughout the campaign. And the ones that were unable to make that planned gift arrangement, they were very thoughtfully generous in an outright way. And they just allowed that their estate matters are so complex that they couldn't dig down and make that happen presently. Those people are going to be long-term donors. We know that. Some people have made just placeholder estate gift arrangements. Just very modest, but we know it's going to be very significant.
Keep the relationship. All right, is there one more in the back or we, good, everyone, one more, last one.
My question was, Pete, you've had experience with several different programs in several different spaces. If you had to start or restart a planned giving program, what are the most valuable activities that you think you should start?
Well, that's really pretty simple. It's connecting again and it is engaging and then involving because it is a process. And so, the connecting is really the marketing and the awareness. So, take a look at your marketing budget, you know, and think about what your budget is and how much you're going to be able to invest in that because that's really where it all starts. You don't rely on that to do the heavy lifting for you because that's going to have to come in the personal relationship. But you need to have that awareness to help you going forward when you are in the presence of that individual. So, budget and staffing have a lot to do with it. If you're a startup, I wouldn't worry so much about the charitable trusts and the more complex creative arrangements and just focus on a solid bequest program and just encourage people to want to be involved and to want to make that eventual arrangement. It's not the excitement of making a gift and getting income back that is really going to turn that person into a philanthropic supporter. You know, it may capture their attention, but they, they're probably going to be a minimalist and give you ten thousand dollars to start that gift annuity or twenty-five thousand, whatever your minimum is. So, again, the work we do is about relationship. You know, it's the art and the science of building a relationship, cultivating it. And philanthropy is very emotional because it involves family, it involves legacy and having an impact. And a lot of people just haven't fully grasped the importance of getting committed to such causes.
And I've heard Peter say in other conversations, that marketing that brings about the awareness should not drive to a tactical gift, but should drive to a conversation, should drive to a relationship. And a lot of the marketing that I at least see that I, as I sit down and walk through it with folks is getting, trying to get people to make an estate gift or a legacy gift from a marketing piece. They're not. They're just very rarely going to do that if ever. And the only reason you hear about is because it's so rare, right? But you got to build that relationship, which just doesn't, doesn't happen. So, that's where the marketing for the just awareness comes in. So, you can then engage with that person is what I've heard you say over and over again. So, cool, good, good. Well, bonus session for those that stuck around, huh? That's good. Love doing that. So, I look forward to seeing everyone again. Thanks, everyone, for coming. Glad you're here.